You are watching Access to the Port County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 15th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access to the port county dot org.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Michigan City Commission for Women and all that is watching. Thank you for taking out your, taking time out of your busy schedule to attend tonight's meeting. Everyone has an agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay. First thing on the agenda is I will do a roll call. At the present time, we don't have a secretary, so I'm filling in until we get a secretary. So, roll call, and if you can say present or whatnot. So, Sarah Jones.
Present.
Linda Conley.
Present.
Charlene.
Present.
Jackie Jones is present. Nyla Williams.
Present.
Keisha War.
Present.
Kiana Edwards. She's absent. Angela Carter. She's absent. And Daisy Lee.
Present.
Thank you. Did everybody have time to review the minutes? If not, will you please review them? It'll take about five minutes to review them.
For 10 to the minutes?
Yeah.
For age?
Age two. Do we need to know, because typically, you know, you motion or make a motion to approve something, you have the name of that person who made that motion and second it. And I don't see that. So is that something that we need to, you know, correct? Because it's not listed.
On which paragraph?
For the monies to donate to Pastor Keisha Likely.
That's...
Third paragraph, second page.
If I can show you that information.
Okay.
For the motion.
I can view that unless someone recalls Keisha's. I think it might have been Kiana, and then I might have seconded it, but I think you should go back and check.
For the donation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Making the donation.
Seconded.
Oh.
I think I had one.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I think that's important.
Okay. So Kiana recommended it and you?
I seconded it.
Did you second it? You seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'll also view those minutes. I'll go back, okay?
Okay.
All right.
I just have a correctional note. First page of who was absent, Lori, is just type on Lori Winks' last name. I have Lori Winks.
Wink, okay. And so you all would know too, I have received an email after the minutes were prepared that Lori would no longer be with us on the commission, okay?
And the league will be appointing somebody else to?
Yes. Okay, let me go ahead. Is everyone finished? Okay.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the minutes from July with the two corrections.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone want a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the treasures report.
Okay, I believe everybody should have a copy. The last report I had done for the commission was in April. So this is taking over, at that time, we had fifteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars and four cents in the treasury. Since that time, we have sent seven hundred dollars to the MBA of Northwest Indiana for Juneteenth. We're pending the check for diamonds and pearls for seven hundred, which was approved in July. And then we had a reimbursement for Christina Isabel that came out earlier between the time of the report and now. So that gives us a balance currently of thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
Okay, does anyone see any discrepancies? Okay. Can someone approve the treasures report?
I believe that we accept the treasure report as its, treasure report as its.
Can someone second?
A second, a second.
Not a... Sorry. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, not opposed. I'm sorry, you all are taking minutes as well. Okay, now we're on the agenda at old business. And we'll discuss, yeah, let's discuss the Business Expo. And that was actually discussed at the last meeting we had. And then we had a second meeting, which was not a paid meeting, but whoever wanted to attend that meeting was allowed to attend that meeting for planning purposes or whatnot. So I can, um... Let's see, I can share with you all. And I think I have a handout, or did you all get the handout? For the meeting that we had regarding the proposed, I'm gonna say proposed joint, joint event. And again, it's proposed because we have to bring this information back to everyone that's on the commission and for us all to be able to approve it, if that's what we're going to do. So in attendance to that meeting, and I said it was a called meeting, but actually, we had said that we would meet, and anyone who was interested in meeting, I said that at the last meeting, I believe, at the last meeting, they can join. I think I sent out an email to them, not certain that I sent out an email, I sent out an email. So in attendance at that meeting, it was held July 24th, 2024, at Muggs Shots. Did you get this one?
Mm-hmm.
Did you have it? Did you guys get that?
I got it.
Okay. Did you all get?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So the purpose of the meeting was to begin in the planning stages of the Business Expo in observance of the Women's Equality Day. The venue was reserved, and I reserved it at the Michigan City Senior Citizens Building. The dates would have been August the 24th or the 25th. They were gonna reserve both of that, those dates for us. The, the small, the Michigan City Small Business Association, along with the Michigan City Commission for Women, were pending, I'm gonna say pending, the discussion, well, pending the joint effort for that particular event in observance for Michigan City Commissions for Women. That again, would have been held either on the date of August the 24th or August the 25th. The Park and Recreation Building, when I went to secure that date for us, or to secure that venue, they stated that they have both of those dates available. Also, they were going to waive the, the cost for us, for that venue. So I don't know if you all recall that being stated. The fees would have been waived and the security fee for that venue, if we had to have security. All that was present that day, I'm gonna say, is Linda Conley, Jacqueline Jones, Angela Carter, Sarah Jones, Camilla Meriwether, and Kiana Edwards. Kiana requested a walkthrough for the venue for decoration purposes. Jacqueline Jones will request and schedule a date for that walkthrough. We discussed about the possibility of media to promote the event, which would have been WIMS, 99.7, Alcohol, Facebook, E-Michigan City, Chamber of Commerce. Jacqueline Jones will talk with Terry Greatham. Sarah Jones will, she agreed to maybe assist with creating the postings, the QR code. And a QR code will be developed. We discussed at that meeting about RSVP, since it's gonna be a free lunch as well. Caterers, we discussed about caterers, recommend caterers, was discussed, and have an impending meeting with them. Vendors, Kiana and Camille would have worked with the vendors and make certain that youth vendors were present. Jacqueline Jones and Angela Carter will work with the community resources, try to get some community resources involved on that particular day. Kiana stated she is waiting for a return call from Tristan from the Urban Enterprises regarding if it's mandatory to host an event in a venue that is in the urban enterprise zone. Kiana stated that she will contact Tommy, who was the previous president of the Urban Enterprise regarding the criteria. Jacqueline Jones will schedule a call meeting regarding that particular meeting and the outcome, so I can bring everything back to you all, if you all wanted to agree to continue this joint effort or not, and not to obtain approval before proceeding with anything else. The meeting was concluded at 7:30 PM, and the meeting was recorded and notes was submitted by Jacqueline Jones. So in discussing that, it was some updates and some changes that had occurred after this particular meeting. So my understanding, what was discussed with me through email from Kiana and Camille is that, and then also verbal, verbally discussed it with me, and then the interchange emails as well. They were due to receive some funding from the Urban Enterprises, so they could put on this event. And again, we were pending a joint effort with them. And I believe at that particular meeting, we had discussed about maybe being able to, what word do I want to use? Be able to assist with the food, the food area, and then also with the social media and promoting through flyers and different things like that, the brochures and pamphlets. So that was gonna be our area for that. Again, my understanding, they received some funding for, for the event from Urban Enterprises, but after we had met, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. Also, we were going to be able to provide the venue, since we got, we were able to get it free. Okay, so after that, they received information that they had to have the event at a venue that was in the urban enterprise zone. So they chose to have the event at Beryl House, and that was gonna cost them. They also stated, they sent me an email requesting not only for us to assist with the food, the catering part, that's a part that we discussed, and the materials, the printing or whatnot with the materials. But I received another email requesting the commissions to cover the cost of the insurance, which is three hundred and fifty-four dollars, as well as the security, which is fifty-five dollars per hour. And the DJ.
What did he say?
The DJ was five hundred dollars. So with that, they, I haven't, I didn't make copies of that.
I think it's the DJ.
I can look at you. I think I made copies of one, one second. It was five hundred dollars. So I definitely had to bring this and discuss this with, with our commission, bringing everything back to you all. My, my look on this, or my intake, and again, I can't make the decisions, I can recommend, but if you all would look at, or I printed off a, a handout for the ordinances for the Commission of Women. And I thought that this would be a good handout for us to view and look at when it's time, or if it's ever a time for us to have a joint event, or you know, something jointly that we would do with someone else, but we definitely have to go by our ordinances. And if it relates to anything in our ordinances. Yes, it is regarding Business Expo. Our theme for the year of 2024 is entrepreneurship. So in a sense, it does fit in, but on the same token, some of it may not. Again, we have to keep in mind, and I think some flyers, oh, this was another thing that I wanted to share. We have, I don't know if you received these?
Yeah.
Okay. So Sarah, thank you. Sarah had, she just, this was just a draft, something that Sarah drafted. And this would, this one right here, to me, would speak volumes like diversity, meaning it's for, it'd reach all cultures, you know, diverse. I believe their theme that they had, that they recommended, and I think that they put it on Facebook already, to save the date, it was...
For this?
It was Soul Fest. Yes, it was Soul Fest. And I had reminded that it has to be, you know, something cultural, diverse. No, just to save the date, because she wanted to reach out to vendors.
Okay.
So, but it wasn't approved.
Not to what's in it, but yeah.
So it sounds to me, based on, so there was a meeting held, and this is what was kind of agreed to originally discussed.
It was a discussion of that.
It was a discussion.
And then the second, that has changed, the requests have changed from what the original discussion was.
Yes.
Yes.
And I, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. And again, a couple of things pointed, that pointed out to me was, and I mean, it may be minor to some, but again, it has to be a diverse, diversity within the community. So this is what we came up with, if we were going to continue to have the joint, was basically Women's Equality Day meets entrepreneurship, empowering equality, equality through entrepreneurship. So it wasn't titled just for a specific group, you know? That's one. And then another, I'm sorry, and then another thing was the additional request. I know that it was stated that maybe we can, if it was agreed upon with all of us regarding the food, if it was gonna be a joint effort regarding the food and regarding the materials and the venue, because the venue would have been free for us.
Right.
So we wouldn't have to tap into our budget, you know, for that. The only thing that we were going to have to, if we had to, if we didn't receive a sponsor to help out with the food, I mean, with the food would have been just a request from the treasurer regarding the food, that would have been it. But my concern is all the additional costs. We also are planning our own events, which is gonna be a workshop, but it's gonna be sponsors, a workshop for grant writing. Grant writing, community resources and different things of that nature to connect with our theme this year. We're gonna have a couple of speakers, a financial educator from Horizon Banks, pending our meeting with her, for her to come in and speak. And then also to prepare for the gala for next year. Then also our retreat, you know, so, and then we wanna be mindful too. We wanna still, although we may have funds, but we need those funds. And we need to have a cap, making sure we have a certain amount that remains in the treasure that we have. Not saying that this wouldn't be a good event to do, but right now, my recommendation, I'm not really seeing a joint effort. I'm just seeing if maybe we can still maybe do a...
So I'm...
I think everybody needs to speak.
Speak, right. Everybody right.
Yeah. In your opinion, I can't...
No, 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 I'm not giving an opinion.
No, I'm just saying we all need to, you know, chime in on this. And Charlene, go ahead, and then I'll go on.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, when I look at the aim and goal of the commission, I, I... And this is, it almost sounds like a gathering and a celebration. And I'm not sure if there's an educational component or components within that that would fall within what we say our commission, our aims, goals of the commission. It sounds like a fun event, and I know that you said that there would be vendors there, yet I'm not really sure if there are educational, or opportunities to advocate or advance the issues of women. But that's just kind of my initial.
And I agree, because at our previous meeting last month, I don't know if, and then also at that call meeting, we discussed a possibility for, we had a speaker in line, which would have been Mayor Angie, and then we also had another entrepreneur that was gonna speak that on fluids. I believe she stated that at our last monthly meeting. So we had like maybe three speakers, but again, when they, oh, and I left out this part, they had to change the date since they couldn't, since they found out that in order for them to be able to receive their funding, they had to have it at that, a different location, which changed the date, which would have been on a Sunday, August the 25th, so that everyone would have had to see if they can accommodate that date. So that was another concern. But no, when I'm sharing, I'm just bringing back to you all as much information as I can, so we can all, as Nyla said, discuss it, because it's a lot of components to this.
Right.
So I want everyone to chime in. I want to hear from everyone, and thank you, Charlene.
What was the food budget that was discussed and out for, that we would provide?
I don't think we just look at...
We didn't.
We didn't.
Okay.
Because we were looking at sponsors to help us out first, and if we needed some additional information, assistance, we would have recommended it or whatnot.
My concern is that you went from, we went from very little funding to probably almost two thousand dollars, including food, if you include food and printing. We agree as a commission to keep our account no lower than ten thousand, so that we have the funds to operate or do a, a program, gala, fundraiser, the next year. And if you're looking at pushing that up to about a two thousand dollar amount, that's pushing, pushing us awful close, and we've still got a very...
And I agree.
Long few months left of the year.
I agree. I agree.
So when we initially agreed to this, the funds were nowhere near this amount.
Right, and I agree.
And now you're looking, you've got insurance, security, DJ, food, printing. The only thing we're not gonna supply payment for, it looks like to me, is vendors and...
Rental.
Or I mean, the rental, yeah, so...
And, and she's not here for me to ask, but my question was, because again, I know that, and I don't know if it's for me to disclose the amount that they received, or if it's for Camille and Kiana to disclose the amount that they received from Urban Enterprise, pardon me?
I believe it.
Yeah, so, to let her to do that. So that's what I'm saying, I don't know if it was for me to disclose that amount, or if it was for her, but I agree with Sarah, it's like, we went from a small amount to a larger amount that's being requested, and some additional items, because at the beginning, it was just the food and the printing, which some of this was gonna be donated, you know? Again, we were gonna look at sponsors, maybe to assist with sponsoring the food, and whatever else, if we fell short, we would have came back as a commission and requested any additional amount that was needed. But we never agreed, or it was never stated previously, and you two were there, so please correct me. Meaning, when I say you two, Sarah and Linda, it was never discussed their security fee, it was never discussed about, it was discussed about entertainment, but it wasn't for us. It was never discussed about any of that.
So, can I let you?
Yes, thank you. Okay. This is my two cents.
More.
You want more?
Yes. Tell me if that nickel's worth, okay? Nickel maybe?
Yeah, ten, fifteen, twenty. All right, I think it was a good idea, you know, to start with. Let's not, you know, knock that. You know, I plan a lot of events, and big and small. The timing of this is too short.
I agree.
The timing of this is too short, we don't want to, you gotta have time to plan. You have to have time to promote. A week or two, this is not enough time to do that. Vendors, to try to get them, you probably would get some, but to get the people that we may want to get, we need to give them enough time. And that's not being respectful of folks' time, you know, when you go and ask them to be somewhere in a week or two. You know, so we shouldn't be doing that, just bad look for us, you know? So we need at least sixty days minimum, I would say. I mean, probably can do it sooner, but at least that, to promote. And again, with, with everything you stated, with, you know, the change, and the, you know, the cost of the location and things like that, and then to, then turn around and say, okay, we're gonna have this in a week or two, it's just not feasible. it's just not feasible, and it's just, it's not the right time.
In all fairness, for them, I'm going to say, for the promotion part of it, that was them promoting that part of it. They just asked us to help out with creating the flyer. They asked us to assist in that area, the media maybe making copies and things of that nature. As part of the vendors, regarding the vendors, again, I saw a posting, and I think that that's what they're doing, is that they're requesting vendors. So they're working on vendors on their end. We had nothing to do with the vendors. The part that we did state, and I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you, I'm not negating anything that you're saying, Nyla, but I'm just, sort of corrections, you know? For the vendor part of it, they're doing it, you know, so they probably already have, but that didn't have anything to do with us. The only thing that we were discussing here last month was Angie and I was going to assist with the community resources. As far as the timing, I agree with you. We did, originally, we discussed to have something for Women's Equality Day, but as I was also speaking with Charlene, we still can. It doesn't mean that, although Women's Equality Day is August the 26th, that doesn't mean that we can't still observe, observe it and host something, the workshop, in another month, like September or whatnot. It doesn't really have to be in August. So I agree with you when it comes to timing, but I was just correcting to let you know, this was on their end, not our end.
Right, but if we're partnering, it doesn't matter if that person is doing it, we're all still, you know, involved, just because they're taking the lead on finding vendors or doing another part of it, our name is still attached to it. And it doesn't matter who's doing this, or, you know, that.
So you're saying in the joint.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
I, I, I kind of get the sense that while the intention was to be a joint, it's not.
Right.
Because, yes ma'am.
I agree with Nyla, is that when it started out, we're also a partnership here.
Yes.
And now, you know, we kind of, we, we didn't, but we sort of did set on a date what we were, what our end was going to be with the partnership. But then when they came back, but everything changed, that just wiped out. Because first of all, it's on a Sunday, from two to seven. And that's, you know, people are doing other things on Sunday, you know, church and all that stuff. A lot of that they have planned. And I agree with you, it's a short time notice. And like if we do the catering, it's going to be hard to find a cater, a caterer now, because most people have things already planned.
Yeah.
And then security, and the other things that they want for us to pay for, I'm agreeing with Sarah on this end, it's just too much for us. I think that if you do anything, I'm going to throw this out, to maybe give them a small donation, or whatever, because I think that they were going to look into the catering, the catering. And I think that they said something about the day new, someone for entertainment, and the day we're going to check about, I don't know, I don't think we were involved with security, because we were going to have it at the. And everything, so, you know, we got these additional things, I think, I'm agreeing, I think we should not. We should just give us, if we want to get involved, we should give a small, you know, give a little bit, not a joint effort.
Can we hear from you?
Yes, I was just going to add and agree about the initial thing that you said about the education. That would be glad, that would be good to have a speaker that went in front of everybody before the vendors, should there be vendors there to do their thing, because that would touch more, because what if that's not your interest of it, you know what I mean? So everybody would be able to partake. But, you know, as I hear more of it, it's like, it's just, it's too, it's way too broad suddenly financially for us, and then it's, it's kind of rigid. It was, it was started one way, and now they brought it another way, and it's like, well, we can't do that, if you can't have it this way, we need A, B, C, D, and E, and F, so that we can have our event. And it's a little bit, I just think it's.
I think it's too, it's too much, too tight.
It's too much, and it's too tight, yes.
And I agree, again, my position is for me to gather all of the information, because I needed to gather all the information to bring back to you all. So, in saying that, you know, I had some concerns as well, because again, I can agree with where we were at in the beginning, a small amount, and then again, the timing, things of that nature. So, that's one of the main reasons, again, that I had this handout, so we can, the ordinance handout, that we can relay to this, or rely on this, I'm sorry, to rely on this, of what we can be involved with, what we can promote, what we should be included in and whatnot. Also, again, we want to make certain that, we may have funds in here, but we want to still make certain that we have that cap on here. That doesn't mean that we need to tap in here all the time, we're trying to replenish it.
We can say yes to everyone, that.
Right, we're trying, we're trying to replenish it.
I think that.
And I, I was looking at the, well, thinking on the same line as you were as well, Linda, but again, I had to bring that back with you all, it may not have to be a joint effort, but if we, if you all wanted to, or we all wanted to give like a small donation, but I'm sorry, I didn't hear from you. Can you speak on it, or, I know you can't vote, but can you speak on it?
I'm wondering, are they still going to have the event even if we don't partner with them?
It looks like it.
Okay. Yeah, but I think all of you were right on point with it. It's, I saw August 25th, I was like, wait, what is this?
You know, so it is, but. That, that was one of my concerns I was going to bring, because we didn't get to meet and have that more concrete, okay, this is what's going on. I know myself, I no longer would have time to really put together a program, just because what I already have planned in my schedule. I was hoping to get that information a week ago, to concret some of the printing type materials. And I was a little concerned on.
Well, they were, they were communicating through email as well, but maybe on my end, I'm going to say, when I started receiving the requests, the additional requests, I'm like, I have to bring this back. So it would be a good idea for me to bring it here at this meeting. I understand that August the 24th is probably right around, what is it, August the 26th? I'm sorry, it's right around the corner, but, not the 26th, what day is it, the 25th?
Sunday.
August the 25th.
It's ten days.
But as I explained, as I explained to them, I cannot make a decision, and it's for me to bring back to the commission for us all to discuss it. And at that point, after we discuss it, then we would know what we're agreeing upon, and then I can get back with them. So.
So I think we've agreed that it's too short of a period of time.
Yes.
I guess the question is, do we agree on a donation? And if so, how much, or if we're foregoing that as well?
Do they need to fill out or request it, or are we just going to say, okay, make a motion to, to give them something?
Maybe since it wasn't their idea, the idea came from a group, the form doesn't need to be filled out?
Well, there would still need to, there would still need to be paperwork, including information from them, to be able to issue a check.
But would the thirty day request form still apply then?
Well, if we choose to, if we decided to, that's a good question.
Yeah, because it says.
I know what I need to turn into the controller's office.
Right. This is what we made him write in, this thirty days part. He's going to find a budget, show our funds were spent.
So at this moment though, is no one here to represent them to ask for or to request an amount?
I think.
And then if.
We're going. If we can, if we have.
Well, how much you thinking?
Well, that one.
I know, what was our initial idea of commitment?
We didn't, we did not give a dollar on that idea.
No, we didn't, because we didn't, we thought that it would be a joint with the caterer.
Right. And then at this point, right, and then we really haven't met with the caterer, because a couple of caterers, one was ill, and he wasn't able to meet. And then it was another one, out of the three, she stated that she had another engagement. So it left one more, but she really never followed up. So it really wasn't concrete, and it wasn't a dollar amount that was stated. And then who's to say? Last, my understanding, last year, it was stated to me, I don't know how true, it was stated that they had food vendors, like food truck or something like that out there last year. So who's to say that they may return and do that?
So, I'm, I'm going to put a motion out that we, as a commission, pass on this event, both monetarily and for this year.
And anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Not that we don't want to, but it's.
Right, right. And all of these were.
It doesn't work, yes.
Right. Okay, and I'm going to call names, and we all say aye in favor, okay? Sarah?
I, aye.
Okay, Linda? Charlene?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Nyla?
Aye.
Keisha?
Aye.
Daisy?
She was.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. That's why she told me. Okay, so we're all in favor that we're going to refrain from this event, and we'll see what the future holds. But again, I recommend for all of us, not saying that we all don't, but to just view the ordinance, to see what it is that we can participate in or promote with, or donate towards, and things of that nature. Not saying it's not a good event or whatnot, but for right now, it wouldn't be for us to be able to participate, for the reasons of the short term, I mean, short timing, the fund, the funds, and the, the promotion time.
Because if we do something for free, that's a decent place, why would we want to pay for something?
Right.
You know, tip in to pay for something.
Right, but that was on their end, that wasn't, right.
But when, but when they come back asking for security and insurance, that's on our end, and DJ, that's on our end.
Right, right.
So when we, when we put the request versus our ordinance, it's not a good fit. And to provide additional funding doesn't fit within our funding requirements that we have posted. And not that we're not open to another next year.
Sure.
We're on partnerships.
Okay. All right, so, let's move on to the next.
But I think, I think we're kind of into, we've kind of started that discussion of implementing procedure for sponsor donation request.
Yes, the next, that was the next thing on the agenda, so that falls right into it. And again, I provided some forms, so you all should have a copy of the Commission for Women's Requests for Donation. Also, you all should have a copy of the Funding Guidelines. Did I give you all that? Do you have the Funding Guidelines? Yes, yes, okay. So if you all can take time, not right, not at this moment, but at another time to kind of view the Funding Guidelines, the forms, because I recommend that we have a small committee that can come up with some guides, to come up with some guidelines, a protocol for the donations, the sponsorships, the requests, different things of that nature. So if we can come up with a small committee to do that, that would be excellent. So, does anyone want to volunteer along with the treasurer? Because the treasurer has to be on that committee. So does anyone want to volunteer on the committee to come up with some guidelines for the sponsorship, this is what should be in the budget, yes.
Do we need a committee?
Mm-hmm. We can't just have Charlene come up with the guidelines.
You have the.
But we can revise it, no, I'm saying with the guidelines, this is a.
The guideline speaks for itself, it speaks for itself.
You're looking at that?
The request for funding guideline.
So you're looking. If it needs to be, what I'm saying, if we need some revisions. Example, are we going to, I'm not going to say allow, but say if it's a, a organization or agency or whatnot, that they requested funds in the year of 2023, they requested funds in the year of 24, they requested funds in the year of 25. Do we have something in place saying that they can return every year? I don't see, that's what I'm saying, you know, guidelines like that. Is it something on there saying they can only request up to 500, or they can request up to 1,000? We need guidelines.
So these, these guidelines are current. These we actually.
Which is April 20.
Right.
And pretty just like.
It was just last year. Yeah, we just, this, we just revised all of that process.
Should we add to it, that's what I'm saying, should we add to it?
There are excesses. Funding up to zero to a thousand.
And I do believe we talked about that with people, like each year reoccurring. But what was happening is, maybe we didn't know we had this opportunity, and so we were not getting requests, but from the same people, like, was it Doom Brook? Or Salvation Army requested a few times. And so it was open, because we had the funds, so we did not put a limit on reoccurring years to be able to apply, because we had the funds and nobody else was requesting money. So we chose not to add that into that.
But now, but now.
You hit a good point.
Okay, but now, we do have, it's, it's out there that we have funding.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, then, for an example, it has been one that has returned a couple of times. Not knocking or negating them, but I'm just saying, do we continue? You know, it's nothing in place here saying they can return.
It says here.
Is it saying one time?
May at its discretion choose to fund special projects, projects in a higher one, please reach out. The commission is not obligated to fund all applications.
Right. So if we have the funds and they apply the next year, we may be able to support them, however.
Well, maybe not.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, which is a good point that you made about an agency returning, but no one else asks for money. So I, I, this, this totally makes sense. And then my point was just, I don't know about restricting a group or an individual, but we should just always vote.
Right.
As long as we vote.
Yeah, okay.
But the state, but you don't have to. Remember, I mean, when someone did come in, and they wanted, but it was outside our mission statement, usually as a group, we voted, and we did not.
Okay.
And even they come every year, we do not, it says.
But we're not bound to it.
We're not bound to it, right.
We can, so that's, we have a court, at least a quorum.
Exactly, and, and just vote, vote on it, that's.
So, I, I was going to say, just in previous years, when I was treasurer, I've, I've got a running ledger of who we've contribu, how, who we've contributed to and how much. And repeats are not that often.
Okay.
At, at least in the several years I was treasurer, and I'd gone back to some records that we had for a year or two before. So it's not, I think the big one was, was it Salvation Army with the program they do with?
I can't, I can't remember. But that directly impacts the women and children, it was a program. So we felt it was important to support them, because they directly impacted women and children in the community, and helping them get a leg up and getting things that they needed, like car seats or things like that. Whereas an individual, we may not want to help fund every single year, because it's just supporting that one person. Whereas an organization who's helping 15 women and children with our $500 makes more of an impact.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are you all saying that you want to keep this intact? Or you don't need a committee to come up or revise or make any revisions? Or you just want to keep it as is, and.
You're sorry, keep it.
Keep it as is? Keep it as is, not to revise anything, no revisions, okay.
Even, that's what we're here for, we can, we have a discussion on whoever's coming to us asking for money. If it doesn't align with our mission and what we're doing or if we feel that, you know, we don't have the funds at this time, then we have the authority to make that decision. And I think it should just be left at that and then if they come, then we make a decision at that time.
Okay, alright, so we will not be making any revisions. Um, and we will continue to use the Request for Funding Guidelines. On everything we do, we do do that, I could say that we come back as a commission and we agree or disagree on whatever, okay?
And we have one question.
Yes.
Um, how do we put out that we have, that we support, you know, and that we are available? How, how do we do that?
I, I'm thinking it was just word of mouth or something.
This is on the website.
That's on your website, yes.
Um, so it's, it's publicly access- accessible. And I'm not sure what else might be, it's been a while since I looked at the website, but.
Yeah, I think a lot of people just see the city commissions as a place where they can come and request money. I don't think we need to do any type of promotion to let people know that we have money. But anything city related, especially those, you know, different commissions, they know. Folks know to come to them to ask for, for donations, so we don't need, I don't think we need to do anything extra.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's my bad.
Anything else on this topic? Alright, so we're gonna just, again, we're gonna just keep the Request for Funding Guidelines in place. Thank you ladies for your input on that. Um, New Business, Empowering Entrepreneurs Grant Writing Workshop is a, something that um I'm working on.
Are you gonna go back to the secretary position?
Oh, did I miss that? I'm sorry. Does anyone want to volunteer for the secretary? And we're waiting for our new appointee from the league, what is it, the Women League Vote or the League of Women Voters?
Doing the burgers.
Yes, so I received an email, but one email stating that they would um appoint someone, but I don't know if they're appointing them yet, so. Um, but in the meantime, does anyone want to volunteer and take notes? Okay, so I'll continue to take notes. I'll try my best. It's okay, it's okay, I'll try my best.
Don't you worry.
I'll try my best, it's okay.
If you can find a volunteer outside of the commission, I've seen other commissions do that. Really, they have, yeah, someone, they can volunteer, yeah, and come in and take minutes.
Okay, will you all be opposed if I brought in a recorder, a little recorder to record our me- meetings? Although they're recorded, but like after this meeting I can record, you know, they, it will be recorded and I can go home and type out.
I've seen that before.
Okay, would you be opposed to that? Okay, that may work better for me. Alright, so moving on to New Business, Empowering Entrepreneurs Grant Writing Workshop, just working on something. Um, and I'll bring back all of the information to you all on a couple, again, so, we didn't get many surveys, but um some of the surveys that we did get, and then also by mouth, you know, feedback, it was a good uh program that we had, the International Women's Day. But the request of um information for grant writing, you know, what's out here for small businesses? Um, how is it someone to educate us on the financial part of it and different things of that nature to get started? Um, so reached out to an organization and another um young lady that's in Lake County or whatnot that um educates on grant writing. And then I'm waiting to hear back from another agency, organization, um because they may be able to have an instructor that would be able to present at the um Grant Writing Workshop. Then pending talking with the financial educator at Horizon Bank, if she would be available that day as well as another person. It would be some, a free lunch, light lunch or whatnot, because I'm pretty certain we will be there for a couple of hours. It wouldn't be just one hour. We will open it up, um have RSVPs because I'm pretty certain um a lot of individuals, whether it's non-for-profit or small business owners would want to, and even if you have the daycare, um individuals that's interested in um beginning daycares or whatnot, um knowing how to go about receiving grant, fundings with grants. Um, you have a lot of organizations that provides funding from grants, which is United, what is it? Uh, Unity Foundation, you have um the Michigan City with that, the Enrichment, the.
Enrichment Corporation?
No, the, the large one that they do.
What's it, Towns?
The large one they do for September, usually they.
United Way?
Not, well, United Way maybe one, but it's another one, it's um the Enrichment Grant, is it Daisy? It's called the Enrichment?
Yeah, Enrichment Corporation, yeah.
Oh, is it the Enrich- okay, I'm sorry. So, you know, even prior to that cycle occurring, because I know they will announce it and then it's a, a deadline, but some don't know how to go about doing it. So still working on that, um maybe looking at um September, October, there's still enough time. And getting a sponsor to sponsor the um, the lunch for us. And, and if you all know of anyone, to give them the opportunity to provide that lunch or whatnot, a caterer or something. And again, we had discussed that at a previous monthly meeting, so let's try to use some different ones to give them an opportunity. When I, the next thing on the agenda, the next item to discuss was the recommendation of speakers. Uh, do you all have any recommendations for someone to come and speak of, uh, speak regarding their organization or, or something, a, a topic regarding um education or something that would fit with the uh Michigan City Commission for Women? Please let me know and then I could reach out and maybe I can have them come at our meetings to present sometimes, okay? So that was that item. Angela's not here to give us any feedback regarding the Senior Citizens Workshop, maybe pending. Um, the next thing on the agenda was twenty twenty-five Gala fundraiser. If we can begin to come up with a committee, and that would be basically um a gala for fundraising to replenish our budget or our, not budget, but our treasure. So is anyone interested here in working on that gala?
Yes, I think we all should be a part of that.
To be a factor.
We all should be a part of that.
But I thought it was only a subcommittee supposed to be.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Subcommittees can be outside of our normal monthly meetings, but it have, it can only be, is it three or four?
And then the sub, unless you, this is a couple of different committees, if it's like.
Less than a forum, I think.
Yes, and it's.
Right, but then the subcommittee and then you have the entertainment piece and, you know.
So for example, if it be a subcommittee, I will not join the subcommittee because I, of work, but you throw me the program stuff and I can put it together.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not technically on a subcommittee, but I still help out with the event. I'll go to decorate that day if I'm, you know, the, the evening before and things like that. But I'm not actually sitting down making all the, contacting vendors or sponsors and things like that.
And previously, you know, I did speak with the previous um president prior to this, but um it is supposed to be subcommittee. So with it, but then the subcommittees return back to all of us and they report everything, what they're planning or whatever's discussed. And then we as a commission approve it or not.
And give our input or not.
Yeah, and recommendations, so that's why I was asking.
Okay, that, that's fine.
And then at our retreat, we can do a lot of discussion about that, if we do a retreat where we have that extended period of time, so everyone gets kind of an idea, like their ideas taking place.
And I think that this would be the time that we should start planning and getting a date for next year. We know it's not gonna be this year, but next year, so. Nyla, am I putting it off?
Yeah, but I think we need to have um different subcommittees, cause.
We are.
So.
The International Women's Day.
Right, no, the names of those subcommittees, it's not just one committee handling everything, but it could be a couple of people handling decorations, it could be a couple of people in here doing entertainment, you know, venue, things like that. And then it could be three or four, three or four, and then I could say, but I think we need to label whatever those committees are and let each person decide which one they want to participate in.
And we did that at the previ- at our first or second meeting where we discussed about subcommittees. But going back to what Sarah was saying, with the subcommittee, say if it's three or four, right? And within that subcommittee, you're working with the decorations or whatnot. You could still reach back out to the rest of us and we, you know, and you can say, hey, Linda, um Jackie, I need your help with the decorations, and then that's where we come in at. But as that planning part of that subcommittee is, should be only three, no more than four.
I'm not sure where I want to be at just yet.
Oh, so you're saying like International Women's Day, subcommittee, the gala?
Be on a committee, I'll be involved on, on either one.
So you're saying which one?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to, to break that down first. And then bring it to the entire commission to say, okay, we have these different categories. Which one, and then maybe you could do an email poll or something, which committee would you like to, you know, be a part of? And it's, you know.
So are you saying like, okay, again, at the previous meetings that we had, I think it was the second meeting maybe, the first or the second meeting, we discussed that about the different subcommittees that would be needed. For one, like the International Women's Day for twenty twenty-five, then you have the gala for twenty twenty-five. Then, oh, no, I'm sorry, the workshop, uh work, the workshops. Um, and then the, I don't know if it's one that is needed for the retreat, I have the retreat on this agenda, but I don't know, this would be my first one attending, so.
My, my impression though is um, there's category, so we're just talking the gala?
Yeah, just the gala.
And, yeah, and so um, Nyla, you've worked galas before? So what are some categories?
Girls Club Gala, we have one every year.
Yeah, so what are some of the categories we should be thinking about?
Like I said, decorations, that's the break, the setup and breakdown, who's handling, you know, all of that. I'm on that committee. Um, and then you have uh ticket sales and so. Marketing, um.
The food.
Yes.
The venue.
But see, yeah, food, the venue is come together because typically at the place you're having it at, that's all, you know, together and it's typically the director and, because you need to be that person. But, but I'm saying, then someone else can help you, but those are a couple, at least. Um, I have to look and see which ones we all have laid out, but those are a couple, I know. Decorations, the, the venue, ticket sales, ticketing, entertainment.
So people can say what they're good at.
Yes.
You know, what you're. Right, okay, I get what she's saying, I get what she's saying now. No, 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 I get what you're saying, so in order to be, to develop the subcommittee, you're saying to find out. To see who would be on the committee.
Yes.
Okay, I got you now, I got you.
You don't want me doing anything with budgeting?
We're not asking, alright.
See, I'm good there.
Yeah, so maybe, will it be fair to say, but we don't wanna continue to prolong this, so at the next meeting in September, um if you all would think about some of these, thank you, Nyla, now I get what you're saying and thank you for the clarity. If you would think about some of the categories um that you think that you would bring.
I'll send the email.
Yes.
Of the ones that we're doing, because it's in October for the uh gala. Um, and I'll send all those out and then from there.
We can be signed.
Then if it, if it all pertains to what we're doing, then we can select and then people will be starting to think about it before the next meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
But again, placing some emphasis on it, it still has to be the subcommittee and only can be three, no more than four, right?
Well, what goes, Nyla's gonna send us out an email.
Right, right, right.
Or title, it's.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, with task, yeah, they need a task. Well, I wanna do decorations, I can computer.
And so from there, from that list, then we'll develop the subcommittees, okay? Alright, thank you for the clarity. Okay, so moving from here, from, moving from here, um, from this item, and again, we're gonna revisit this next month, the Michigan City Commission for Women's Retreat.
It's in September.
No, September.
This will be number, okay.
It's not really a hard.
If you all can think of somewhere, a venue that you, because it's at a venue, I know, right? Or you all attended the last ones, right?
I attended last.
Uh, yeah.
Cause I, I was told that they give it every year.
Yeah, we've done one, um, did one in an Airbnb.
Okay.
Took the house last year.
I missed that one, we've had it at the um Harper Creek Mansion.
We've had it at the, somewhere at the old hospital, there's.
So it's just really about finding meeting space and then developing an agenda, it's just really about planning for the next year.
Okay, alright, Oc- October or November or somewhere like that? October, November, cause I know you all have probably tight schedules for the retreat.
Retreat. It is, yeah, I mean, it just, it's a time of the.
Maybe say October, if you're looking at putting together that information, a little more concrete for like New Year starts.
So let's look at October.
Yeah.
Weekday or weekend?
I think the weekend.
Weekend, a Friday, a Saturday, probably, cause a lot of us work.
We've mostly, I think Saturday, Saturday, so I.
I can't miss Saturday.
Okay.
Cause it's usually like quite a few, like four, four hours or so, we just do a little potluck, bring some food in.
Okay, so if you all can think of.
And I think we usually forego the meeting that month, right?
Yeah, right. So we try to, we tried to schedule it like around that middle of the month and that would be also considered our monthly meeting, right? Unless you wanna hold one.
Thank you for that information, ladies, I really appreciate you all. So we'll discuss that, come back to that next month. Then you have down here, or we have here, twenty twenty-five Women's International Day, and that's another item we can probably discuss at the Women's Retreat. So it looks like um that's concluding our meeting for this evening. Uh, before we conclude though, Daisy Lee, do you have any comments? Or would you like to share any upcoming events or any comments or recommendations?
I have nothing new at this time.
Okay. I want to congratulate um Nyla for the achievement. She received a, a reward yesterday, a war, right? Yesterday from United, is it Unity Foundation?
United Way.
United Way, United Way, United Way, I'm sorry, United Way Foundation. I wanna share or share with you all, I believe that um she received this award based on her contribution to the committee, I mean, not only, not to the committee, but to the community, her efforts. And I appreciate, and I'm pretty certain the commit- uh, the community appreciates all of your hard work, all of your efforts, um you're a great asset to La Porte County, to Michigan City, and also to the Michigan City Commission for Women. So we're grateful for you, you keep going.
Thank you.
And uh thanks again for all of your achievements, I want you all to know that.
Thank you so much.
Also, um, what, let's take a place, I, I don't know, but Keisha, I'll let you elaborate on the event, huh?
Never mind.
So Jesus.
Go ahead.
For, for um.
Okay, I'm listening.
I was gonna let you, I was gonna let you, yeah. I was gonna let you um elaborate on the upcoming event in October.
Yes, um, we are having a breast cancer walk.
Who is we?
Minority Health Partners of La Porte County, we're gonna have a breast cancer walk.
When?
Anybody can come out and walk. Anybody can come out and walk, it's gonna be free, we're not doing T-shirts this year, but do come out, participate, it'll be at ten AM. And we will be starting at, gosh, I can't think of the name.
We're in the church again?
Um, it's on Wabash Street.
That's not like, that's ribbon Jackson.
Do you know the date?
Yes, Esther Jackson, April fifth, at ten AM.
Okay.
October.
Yep, come on out, if you have something pink, just wear something pink.
Okay.
And support.
And then also.
And I'm not gonna walk you too far, too long. Try to make so everybody can aim.
And then also.
And then later in the month, the eighteenth, I believe, we will be having.
October the eighteenth?
October.
Mm-hmm.
We'll be having a gala, and it'll be at, please help me.
Is it OREC?
OREC.
OREC, Temple. I was just gonna ask what they use, OREC.
And I will get, bring some tickets and, and also ticket information, cause I don't have it on me, and.
And how much are the tickets?
It escapes me. It'll be seventy dollars a ticket.
Okay.
Or five sixty a table, tables are eight seats.
Can you send an email out with that too?
You say what?
Can you send an email out with that too? Do you have a flyer or anything with that information, with the tickets and?
I can't hear you.
A flyer with, um, the gala and stuff?
Oh, how can you reach me?
No, do you have the information?
I don't have one, that's why I said, yeah, I don't have the rest of it right now, I don't have a flyer now.
I'll send it out.
And I do have some flyers.
Breast cancer month, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right, October's your breast cancer month.
Right.
So with your breast cancer walk.
Is it the, the first weekend?
Right, you gonna put out anything that we need to help you put out, post?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, you'll, you'll be able to see it on Facebook, and you're gonna see some flyers around, and I have some flyers, I just didn't bring.
Okay, and to the meeting. I'm gonna put, help put up some too.
Um, Nyla, do you have any information that you wanna share at this moment, any events? Anything that St. Anthony's or, uh, Francis can, uh, Lions is hosting?
I'll wait till the next meeting.
You'll wait till the next meeting?
Big deal. You can tell me now, yeah, wait for it, so I can. Twenty twenty-five is coming.
Okay. Um, Sarah, anything with the schools you'd like to share?
Schools started? Bless your heart. It's started.
Okay.
There's new superintendent?
Yeah.
Yes, window.
Congrats. But all, I believe all the schools, private, public, Montessories, I think everything's pretty much starting and going now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Miss Lyla?
What, you're still at, um, anything with schools?
Seventh, eighth?
No, I guess.
Okay. Okay, um, I have an, uh, an event, um, who is it, Diamonds and Pearls, they're having their purity ball uh, Saturday, October the twen-, not October, I'm sorry, August the twenty-fourth, and it's at Michigan City Senior Citizen, Saturday the twenty-fourth. Okay.
They have a purity ball?
It's a purity.
What is that, like a death party?
Um, it's similar, but I think that they're, like.
I gotta go home.
So, it's, she was here to present, so it's, oh, okay, so basically it's.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? And there's no one here from the public, um, I just also wanna, uh, give kudos or say thank you to all of the organizations that conducted the back-to-school rally, um, donating the supplies. I'm pretty certain that the parents are grateful for it, and, um, also with, um, Nicole Stewart, um, Thursday. She had, uh, she, um, opened it up to the community, it was like a citywide or a community-wide prayer to cover the children returning back to school, so that was very nice, um, thanking and appreciating all of the pastors, the clergy that came out to represent that event, and, and I believe, um, she does it every year now, she does it every year, so. Uh, I think that's it that I have, um, again, I appreciate you all taking out time out of your busy schedule to come and meet, and I will see everyone in September. Oh, I'm sorry, I may have to revise the date for September, and maybe have the meeting either the fourth September or the second, uh, the second Thursday in September or the fourth Thursday in September, if that's okay with everyone, just let me know.
Um, December, you have to let us know.
Well, I don't know what's good for your schedule, I mean, with your calendar.
So this is, Nikki, it's September twenty-sixth, so that's almost the end of the month.
Right, so if, if that's gonna be, okay, that date, the twenty-sixth, if not the second.
That's funny, cause I wouldn't have been able to attend the nineteenth, so you know what those were.
Good, all right.
That's the one I was. Can someone motion first in this meeting?
Motion that we end this meeting.
Okay.
Twenty seconds.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, thank you, ladies.